All right, we're going to be starting shortly. Stand by. Okay, stand by everybody. We got about 20 seconds.
All right, stand by in 10, 9, 8, 7, 6, 5.
Okay, we are live. Good morning, everybody. Thank you for attending and thank you to all those watching on Channel 8, KPTS, and our Facebook and our YouTube channels. So welcome. We will call the meeting to order on Wednesday, August 16th of the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners. Madam Clerk.
Invitation to be led by a moment of silence. Please remain standing for the flag salute.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk.
Roll call. Commissioner Lopez. Commissioner Dennis.
Present.
Commissioner Beatty.
Present.
Commissioner Howe.
Present.
Chairman Meitzner.
Present. Next item, please.
County announcements.
Good morning, Nicole.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. I am Nicole Gibbs of Strategic Communications. Visiting us today, we have Dr. Tiffany Masson. She is the President and CEO of the Kansas College of Osteopathic Medicine. She's here today to provide an update regarding the institution as a whole, or the newest class of student doctors, the commitment and the commitment they have to the Wichita region and state of Kansas. Doctor?
Morning, Doctor. Welcome to the meeting.
Good morning, Chairman. Thank you for the invitation to join you all today. And first, before I get started, I want to say thank you for all of your service and your commitment to health and to the county of Sedgwick County. So thank you so much. I want to share with you just some key updates as it relates to KHSC, Kansas Health Science Center, and the Kansas College of Osteopathic Medicine. We are not-for-profit institution, as many of you know. We are dedicated to providing and improving healthcare for our state. You all know too well the dire need that we have as it relates to physicians per capita for our state and certainly within our county. And we're really highly focused on meeting the needs of our community. We've strategically partnered with over 26 hospitals, clinics, FQHCs across this great state of Kansas, many of which are within this county. And we've leaned into a new innovative educational model to rethink medical education, to incorporate meaningful technology like virtual reality, also incorporating artificial intelligence, machine learning into our curriculum, because we are in a moment of time, as you all know too well, around the importance of technology, artificial intelligence, and what that means as we prepare physicians of future and healthcare. As you know, 92 out of 105 counties within our state are wholly or partially medically underserved, including Sedgwick County. And we meaningfully, purposefully placed ourselves within downtown Wichita and the state of Kansas to really lean into the key statistics for our state and our county to make a meaningful difference and provide impact across our county and state. As it relates to timeline at a high level, in February of 2022, I know many of you have already toured our facility. We moved into our new facility on Douglas, 217 East Douglas, and we're really proud to be part of the revitalization of downtown Wichita. In August of 2022, we actually welcomed our first class of students, 90 students. And actually, in the beginning of their coursework, they entered into a summer immersion program in Western Kansas, which is a key regional hub for us. In 2023, we had our White Coat Ceremony for our class of 2027, which was 136 new students that joined us just weeks ago. So we're really proud now to have 226 and one returning student, at 227 students that are walking our hallways today. We know that in 2024, which is only but 10 months from now, our students will be entering into clinical rotations across this great state of Kansas, and many of which are within this county. And we couldn't be more proud of our strategic partners that are welcoming our students soon to be, to be able to provide clinical rotations and the expertise to train them as future physicians. And as I mentioned earlier, we have 107, I didn't mention this earlier, but in 2024, we're already recruiting for 170 new students that will join us. So at any given point when we're fully operational, four years from 2024, so in 2028, we'll have upwards of more than 600 students walking our hallways. This is just a picture of our class of 2027 White Coat Ceremony. I'm so proud that many of you were able to join us for the reception or for the White Coat Ceremony. So thank you for celebrating with us and welcoming our 136 new students to be future doctors within our state. We do have a strong commitment to Sedgwick County and the state of Kansas. As I mentioned earlier, one of our core values is around community, giving back. And from moment one that they enter into our coursework, they are providing service to our communities. We do see ourselves as serving as the anchor in downtown Wichita for the healthcare corridor that is developing itself. And we couldn't be more proud to be here and representing at Kansas Comm. We've developed Kansas-based student pipeline, which has been very important to us through partnerships with local middle and high schools, and also have engaged in three-plus-four agreements, as I'll mention in a few moments, with Kansas colleges and universities. And as I mentioned earlier, we have established ourselves in Western Kansas, developing a medical education hub to support that community and making a meaningful impact. In service to our community, only within the first academic year, we have provided 5,000 hours of community service, both with our faculty and our students giving back in the weeks throughout their academic year with us. Three-plus-four agreements are really important as we start to think about the importance of bringing in Kansas-based students, incorporating them into Kansas Comm, getting them excited about doing clinical rotations within the Kansas region, within the county, and then ultimately building residency programs so that they can ultimately stay here is our intention and our goal long term. And in so doing, we were strategic in partnering now with three-plus-four programs with Newman University, Friends University, Kansas Wesleyan University, Fort Hays State University, Southwestern College, and many more to come. And we're proud of this because it not only allows us to bring Kansas-based students of quality into Kansas College of Osteopathic Medicine, but it also emphasizes the importance of shortening time to degree. So students that are in their undergraduate program in their fourth year will become their first year at the Kansas College of Osteopathic Medicine for those that meet the admissions criteria. And ultimately, that shortens time to degree and shortens debt load. And that was something that I heard through and through when I was on a listening tour, when I was first appointed as President in 2019 and 2020. So the impact on Kansas, this is my last slide. I'm really proud that the number of graduates for our first four classes will be at least 552 students that we will be graduating. We anticipate that about 315 of those students will begin practicing in primary care. We know that osteopathic students, about 57% of them, once they graduate, will go into primary care specialty. And about 18% of those will then engage into rural practice, and that's why having a medical education hub, especially in Western Kansas, is exceptionally important to us, because we know that if we get them excited about what it means to provide care in rural areas, especially to our underserved, they'll become more excited and apt to engage in residency and work thereafter once they graduate. Annually, we will generate about $96.8 million as a not-for-profit institution. And based on our feasibility study that was conducted in 2020, we anticipate that we will be responsible for contributing 500 new jobs to the healthcare sector. And over the 12 years first in operation, we anticipate that we also will be contributing about $1 billion in direct and secondary revenues to the state of Kansas. So I'm really thankful for all of your support and for your continued collaboration and for all that you do within our county. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Tiffany. Anybody? You know, I just had a couple quick, on your interesting stat, the 136 students, can you tell us, can you share, how many applications did you have for those 136 spots?
Thank you so much. Great question. Yes, we had over approximately 4,500 applications that came through. We did approximately 500 interviews of very highly qualified candidates. And then ultimately, the faculty and the admissions committee chose the 136 that are now walking our hallways.
And those 136, how many are Kansas students?
Approximately 21% of this class are Kansas-based students. The rest are across the nation. The primary states that we seem to be recruiting mostly from are Texas, Florida, Illinois, and also Kansas, including California as well. Last year was 22%.
So over 100 of these students are from out of state, so.
Yes, exactly.
Really good. And my last question was, I met one of the students, your oldest new student.
Yes.
He was, he's moving his family here from Tennessee?
Yes.
And he was, was it 20 years in the Army?
I believe that's true, yes.
Years in the Army, and he's wanting to get into medicine, so.
We're very blessed.
So it was good to meet him and his family. Okay, maybe another. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. Dr. Masson, thank you very much for being here today. I first met you probably five years ago or something like that, when you came over to GWP to brief what the vision was at that time, and it was just a vision. And you've made it a reality, which is fantastic. The impact that's going to happen in this community and across the state of Kansas is immeasurable. We really appreciate the vision that you had. In addition, we've talked, you and I, several times about your background in behavioral health. And of course, that's one of our major concerns in Sedgwick County. So hopefully, as all these doctors move through, we can move a few of them over into helping us with our behavioral health staffing, because that's going to be our next big hurdle, as we're building a hospital right now, but I don't know how we're going to staff it. So we need the pipeline in order to get that moving. So everything you're doing is going to have an impact, not immediately, but also so far into the future. Thank you very much.
I'm thankful, thankful to be a partner.
Commissioner Lopez.
Thank you so much. Well, thank you guys for being here this morning. I really appreciate you coming and just giving us this little bit of, about what it is you're doing. I would love to see the stats that you brought today in five or 10 years from now, because I think the work that you guys are doing today is going to impact our state so tremendously that I think we'll see a significant difference there. So I'm just really excited to see what that looks like at that time. But I also love that you guys are getting into high schools now, and I think that's so important as we talk about the next generation of healthcare, getting it to work with students, I think is just huge. So we were at ribbon cutting at Independent School last, I guess it was just a few days ago, and their new program. So I love that you guys are doing that, too. So I just want to thank you for what you're doing. It's so needed here, and it's really appreciated.
Thank you so much.
I don't see any other questions. Dr. Masson, thank you again for, you and your staff for making this available, your time.
An honor. Thank you so much.
Okay, have a good day and good luck with the school year. Okay. Okay.
All right, our next announcement is the 2023 Dole VA Job Fair will be held this Friday, August 18th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the Hyatt. While this event is geared towards veterans, everyone is welcome to attend. For more information, visit theva.gov, and you can find information under the Dole Medical Center. Sedgwick County's final public budget hearing for the 2024 recommended budget is next Wednesday, August 23rd, at 9:00 a.m. in the lower-level auditorium at 100 North Broadway, which is this room. If you are unable to attend, a public forum is available on our website at sedgwickcounty.org. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Okay, any questions? Don't see any. So thanks again, as always, for the information and the upcoming events, and thanks again for being here. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Public agenda.
Commissioners, we had one person sign up for the public agenda. That would be Elder Josie Wright. You can please take the stand, and Elder Wright, we have, you have five minutes to address us, and the clerk here has the clock that will notify you if it goes that long. Okay, thank you. Good morning.
Good morning, everyone. In the name of Christ Jesus, our Lord, as Peter has stated, I am Elder Josie Wright, and I represent Our Yes for Christ Jesus Ministries, Youth Expressing Sovereignty for Christ Jesus Ministries. Our main focus is personal spiritual growth and economic development for all. Today is August 16th, 2023. The Lord is my shepherd. I have all that I need. So first, I wanted to address the community investment agenda and carrying on. That's why I'm here again. Yes for Christ Jesus Ministries. Our ministry have new commercial service location for purchasing, which is now at 3310 East Pawnee, Wichita, Kansas. So we have that particular property scoped out for our Yes for Christ Jesus Ministries Worship Cathedral. We've spoken to Ryan Hubbard on that particular purchasing process from Nice Martin Realtor. All right, it's, will save us millions. I mean, I realize Mr. Maury Sheets and carrying on at the same time, you know, but I'm like, okay, a virtuous woman knows how to bargain. This particular property location is only $900,000, and Maury was talking about $5 million at that point. So we need to go on ahead and kind of budget correctly here in all areas and aspects. Secondly, just a matter of time before our documents are all configured and construed into one place and carrying on, they're coming through the United States Postal Service, so, which would allow us, you know, connection back to the Kansas Office of Secretary of State, the way we forfeit, remember, last year in 2022. I mean, we've been on intensive outreach ministerial assignments. So when that happens, you forfeit, you get right back in there and reinstate. There has to be a connection between the state and here in ground level. They're up there in Topeka, Kansas, so we have to get our programs and services back in line with them. The documents are coming in, and everything will check out. Not to mention, you know, we've already reached the $10,000 threshold, you know, with our little fundraisers and carrying on. We've done that. And now we're like on the map, our program and services with our charitable organization, our church group. And so now we are a charitable organization, which, and so we visit the Attorney General's website to download documents that are pursuant, our fundraisers and carrying on, say we've accumulated more missionaries and have ordained and carrying on. And so now we have 110 missionaries and carrying on to fill up the Shookmire Apartments there with our three operations in this United Citizen Trade Program, and we're doing things accordingly. And then eventually, we'll step out on our own. And we've got our own documents and carrying on with our logistics and everything, and everybody has their respectable webpage. So those are things we teach our young adults and our becoming saints when it comes to United citizenship, whether they're retiring from their ice cream parlor or just trying to get in there and be, you know, united citizens instead of the stigmatism of veteran, all right? Because I know veterinarian clinics, I mean, goodness, we used to go and take the dog to the veterinarian clinic. Ouch, it hurts, all right? So the needles and everything, so I'm all for wellness. And we have, you know, our different organizations that back us up in that area. So while waiting our documents, State Treasury to complete community investment purchasing, we'd like to speak with account receivable departments or the clerk office, like Peter had suggested, upon our alternatives, missing documents, what is needed from us at this point. We know the closure for the tax season is next week, and we want not to be overlooked. I mean, we have so many different plans for Sedgwick County, Wichita ICT, and we would like to be included. Okay. On a more macro level of faith, the state of Kansas, we're about to, about unification, all right? So if we would benefit and be appropriate, the mental agencies and carrying on around here with our beautiful native logistics and carrying on, please help us to deappreciate those. Already, the Sedgwick County offender reentry program, we've, I've called, I may have even mailed documents for Vitacore up there at the Detention Sheriff Office and carrying on, okay, because that's what's going on for those who need, you know, some relaxers and carrying on, little psychotrophics and carrying on. We also have mental health services from Calm Care of Sedgwick County pouring through our neighborhoods and carrying on, serving as some type of extra 911 entity and carrying on. So like I said previously, you know, we're deappreciating the mental health aspect of how to resolve our issues and deappreciate stress in our lives. Last but not least, speaking with the offices of Mr. Ronald Estes, which is a state representative right here on East Kellogg, a state representative that can connect some of our issues and concerns right up there to state capitol and carrying on, and then kind of develop a pathway that we can appreciate. We ask these things as humbly as we know how to do, and we believe that our Father in Heaven have given us the decree and declaration to on our request. Amen.
Okay, all right. Any questions? I don't see any. Thank you for your comments. We didn't have anybody else signed up to, on the public comment, so I make a motion, receive and file. Motion in a second. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez. Commissioner Dennis. Commissioner Beatty. Commissioner Howe. Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Next item, please.
Consideration of minutes. Item A, regular meeting minutes of July 19th, 2023.
Hey, Commissioners, if you had a chance to review the minutes of July 19th, are there any corrections or comments, additions? I don't see any, so I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of July 19th. Motion in a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez. Commissioner Dennis. Commissioner Beatty. Commissioner Howe. Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Next item, please.
New business. Item B, a resolution, amending resolution number 115-2023, which authorized preliminary actions related to the acquisition of a site and the structures located there on for county public building purposes and provided for the issuance of general obligation bounds to pay the cost thereof.
Okay. Good morning, Lindsay. Welcome to the meeting.
Good morning, Chairman. Good morning, Commissioners. I think Kelsey's reading of the title might actually take longer than the actual agenda item here. This is the, I believe, second time that we have talked through this project resolution. So you may recall that you all have now authorized entering into a purchase agreement for the facility on Water Street. At this point, you have authorized a resolution that would cover the estimated $60,000 of costs associated with due diligence. Now, because of the earnest money payments that are built into that purchase agreement, we're asking that you amend the resolution to add those costs. Again, this would allow us to issue bonds later and reimburse our costs. I would be remiss if I didn't point out that Garth Herman from Gilmore and Bell, our bond counsel, is here yet again and ready and available to answer any of your tricky questions. But otherwise, since we've been through this before, I won't bore you with the details. I would just ask that you authorize the resolution.
Okay, and that's just to include the earnest money on top of what we approved?
The two separate earnest money payments that could potentially.
Right, any questions from anybody? Thank you for that lengthy presentation.
My pleasure. Enjoy it while it lasts. This won't be very often.
I make a motion that we approve the resolution amending the other resolution as presented. Motion in a second. Any questions, comments? Being done, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez. Commissioner Dennis. Commissioner Beatty. Commissioner Howe. Chairman Meitzner.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thanks again, Lindsay. Garth, thanks for being here, as always. All right, next item, please.
Item C, report of the Board of Bids and Contracts, regular meeting on August 10th, 2023, and item four from the regular meeting of July 27th, 2023.
Good morning, Commissioners. Mr. Chairman, Joe Thomas, Purchasing Director. As was mentioned, we have two sets of items that we are seeking your approval. Our first one is from a regular Board of Bids and Contracts meeting of August 10th. Yes, print's kind of small for me. And it's three items. And the first item is a change order number two for trash collection services for various departments. And that recommendation is a contract modification for Waste Connections of Kansas Incorporated to a 12% overall increase in the rates listed. Our second item is for each of the 3/4-ton four-wheel-drive crew cab trucks, and this is for fleet and emergency medical services. Recommendation is to accept the low bid from Don Hatton Chevrolet in the amount of $219,400. Item three is the 1-ton two-wheel-drive regular cab long-stake bed truck for fleet. And this recommendation is to accept the low bid from Whiteside of St. Clairsville in the amount of $69,033. As we go to our last set, this is the item four that was recommended from the Regular Board of Bids and Contracts of July 27th. recommended from the regular Board of Bids and Contracts of July 27. And this item is for 11 small or midsize all-wheel-drive SUVs for fleet and the Metropolitan Area Building and Construction Department. This recommendation is to accept the bid from Don Hatton Chevrolet in the amount of $297,550. And as noted, 10 of these items are replacements. We have one item that's in addition to the MABCD fleet. And this additional item is contingent of your approval of item L on the consent agenda that you'll be, talk, or will be presented to you later. I'll be happy to try to answer any questions and recommend approval of both sets.
Okay. Any questions? Just a technical question. So we're, this could approve, but we have another, are we, are we just going in proper order? We're, we're going to consider in a consent agenda item to add the extra fleet car. So we're doing this first. I just make sure we're.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. I don't have any other questions. I'll make a motion that we approve the reported bid, board and bids contracts as presented.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any other questions, comments? I don't see any. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Thank you. Joe, thanks again to you and your staff. Next item, please.
Consent agenda.
Mr. Manager.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioner. Tom Stills, County Manager's Office. Recommend approval of consent items D through O. Want to call attention, as we talked about in agenda review last Friday, that a lot of these consent items are human service related. We are preparing for an end of a federal fiscal year. So you're seeing grants and closure or movement of grants and extensions in relation to that date. There is a $1.8 million grant award coming to aging through the Senior Care Act, a $643,000 amount coming to KD, Kansas Department of Health from KDHE. And then the item on the vehicle, we explained during the agenda review, that is a vehicle for MABCD that the positions were approved in budget last year and the vehicle was inadvertently left off. So we're adding that this year. It is coming from their revenue fund from the builders.
Okay. I'll just comment that I know agenda review, we had a lot of conflict schedules with many of the Commissioners. And so in reviewing this, it, we did have the feedback that this is kind of end of the year, first of the year renewals and new grants. And so that's what we kind of asked Tom. Tom, thanks for explaining in summary. These are, these are critical to our basic services that we provide to the community. So any other questions? Don't see any. I will make a motion that we approve items D through O on the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion in a second. Don't see other questions. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. And we will recess the regular meeting of the Board of Sedgwick County Commissions. And we will, so we can call to order the governing body of the Fire District Number One. We will call to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Madam Clerk, next item.
Roll call. Commissioner Lopez.
Present.
Commissioner Dennis.
Present.
Commissioner Beatty.
Present.
Commissioner Howe.
Present.
Chairman Meitzner.
Present. Next item, please.
Public agenda.
We didn't have anybody sign up for public agenda on the fire agenda. So we do not have any public agenda. Next item, please.
Consideration of minutes, item A, fire meeting minutes for July 19, 2023.
Okay. Commissioners, you've had a chance to review the minutes of the July 19 meeting. Any comments, questions, corrections? I don't see any. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for July 19.
Second.
This is motion in a second. Being no questions, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Next item, please.
Budget discussion.
Budget discussion. Everybody, we had a good, rather healthy and somewhat lengthy, but a good detailed discussion yesterday in staff meeting. That was a public meeting, of course, on this. So does anybody have any comments or questions or further, further questions, comments on the budget discussion of the fire agenda? Okay. Commissioner Howe.
Thank you, Chairman. Just a couple of questions regarding potential revenue to the Fire District. Have we, have we looked at what revenue might be coming in from the Historic Horse Racing Casino up on 53rd Street North? What's that going to look like in terms of Fire District revenue?
We have begun to have, oh, I'm sorry, Lindsay Povrso, your CFO, we have begun to have those conversations, but we don't anticipate an immediate impact, at least for the 2024 budget.
Well, we would anticipate something in the future at some point.
Yes. But we don't know what that looks like yet.
What about the Crosswinds Casino up a little further north?
So we have two years remaining on the contract with them. We have estimated that that contract amount will continue at the same amount through the rest of the forecast. And again, we don't expect, because of the nature of the facility, we don't expect a tremendous amount of increased tax value anytime soon.
What about Integra?
No, we have not yet estimated figures for that because they have been abated for the first 10 years. Now, as they begin to get suppliers, we know that they're planning to construct around that facility. When we have a better idea of what that looks like and when we understand whether or not there will be abatements, we'll start to factor that in as well. But for now, no, that is not included in this five-year forecast.
Do those abatements apply to the Fire District directly or do they, they do?
They would apply to all, all taxing entities.
Okay. I just know that we have some manufacturers, I think, that do payment in lieu of taxes. I'm not sure about the abatement, you know, at the same time with that, that happens or not. But we know we have some.
I agree, it would be ripe for discussion to talk about some kind of fire protection service agreement in, because of the, the, I don't know even what the right word is, but for the chemicals and everything that there will be handling, I expect that there will be some complexities. But I'll defer to the county manager for any comments he wants to make.
That's a really good point. I'm going to set that for staff. We've had this discussion historically on tax abatements and the impact on the Fire District. And it's, it is not consistent across the county regarding payment in lieu of taxes versus those that are not. We, we should have a policy. Fire Board should adopt a policy on how we address those in the future. And I'll set that for staff. So it's a very. Does the Fire District have a chance to vote on those, those abatements?
No.
So I think that's another.
And that's, that would be a legislative platform.
I think we ought to talk about that. Maybe, that should be legislative. Again, I, I want those things to go forward. But I just think that if there's going to be a future public safety obligation, we have to staff that. And I think it's only, only right that we have a discussion of exactly who's paying for that and how. I mean, at the end of the day, Integra is a wonderful company. I want them to be successful. But that doesn't impact just the Fire District. That, that impacts the entire community. And they all, they all get the benefit from Integra's investment in our community. But the Fire District has to provide a service that nobody else is paying for. So they just, it seems a little bit like it needs to be discussed.
Well, and I think once we have a better understanding of what federal funding they'll receive and the timeline and all of those things, I think that will help us with a negotiation discussion.
I guess my point is, we have several things in play right now. We don't have the answers to. But we have several things in play that were, are likely potentially to increase some revenue to the Fire District. So our bottom line today doesn't forecast any of that revenue. But it could, in other words, the picture could be slightly better than what we see on paper today. Right?
I would hope so.
And I don't know if I should bring this up on public media or not, but I will go ahead and bring it up. 53rd Street North, there's a post there. I know there's been discussions about, you know, whether there should be some payment between Sedgwick County Governing Board and the Fire District. Again, there's a facility that was transferred from one entity to the other. I don't know exactly what financial obligation, what financial situation accompanied that, that transfer. But I do think there's a discussion. If we felt like there was something to be corrected there, we might see some potential revenue transfer from the county to the district, only because that might repay those taxpayers for what they invested. Yeah.
Well, and I think Justin, Justin was able to provide some additional information yesterday that I think is pertinent, if you'd be willing to share, Justin.
And I would. Chairman, you put me up.
Oh, yeah. Sorry.
Justin Wagner, County Counselor. I looked into that. Commissioner Howe, the EMS post that you're referring to is owned by Sedgwick County now. Back in 2009, it changed ownership from the Fire District to county ownership. From what I could tell on the agenda in that item, there was no meaningful transfers, like a $10 amount indicated in the, in the, in the quitclaim deed. The minutes do indicate, from that meeting indicated, there was another property that I think went the other way, went from county ownership to Fire District ownership that was, I think, worth less than that property on 53rd Street. But from what I could tell, it didn't appear there was any financial transaction agreed to in 2009 during that transfer. It appeared there may have been some sort of, at least a partial offset between the two. But I don't think the board at that point had any transfer in revenue between the two taxing subdivisions.
So against my, I guess my question would be, was the Commission aware of a discussion between the county and the Fire District that there might, it's hard for us to negotiate with ourselves. I think it's a little weird to think that way. But was there a thoughtful discussion and a debate or decision, thoughtful decision that was made that said, we understand what we're doing and we are, in fact, selling this property, transferring this property to the county and the proper dollar amount was $10 or whatever it would be?
And I'll, I'll tell you right now, Commissioner Howe, I don't know. I can look into that further and report back to you and the other Commissioners.
That was 2009?
Yeah. So, yeah, we, as I say, this Sedgwick County is enjoying the use of what appears to be a full, you know, a multimillion dollar facility potentially. What it's worth today in terms of a appraised value, I don't, I don't know. But it's, it's a pretty nice facility. Years ago, we talked about replacing that. We decided not to do that. We, we fixed it. And then, and today, it's actually pretty useful to Sedgwick County. If we had to build that today, would be, it would be, I think it would be very expensive. I mean, look at the emergency management building today, what that's going to cost. I think this, this is not a hardened facility, but it does have some features. We store vehicles there. It's got a lot of bays built in. And not just that, we also have a, you know, up to two ambulances, I think, can, can be stored there as a post. So it is a very useful facility for Sedgwick County, which essentially taxpayers didn't pay for. So that is my, is my point. Whether this is something we should continue to discuss, I, I don't know. But I guess my point is, we have very little opportunity to ever transfer money from the county to the Fire District. And this is maybe a lost opportunity. Only to be fair, what did the county receive that they didn't pay for? What did the Fire District pay for that they didn't get compensated for when they, when they handed that building over to the county? There is a, a just, there is a justice that should be considered here. Who paid for what? And who's, who's benefiting from that building? So I think it's a discussion that needs to happen. Again, not that this is a, a long-term revenue solution, but it does help our ending budget, budget for the purposes of discussion for salary this year. We're, we're very concerned about a, a roughly a, you know, from our target, our target ending balance over the next five years, we're looking at, I'm just going off the top of my head, off the top of my head, we're about $800,000 off at the end of that five-year period. Again, over that five-year period, we're planning to spend about $140 million. But if that $800,000 is, is enough for us to make a decision regarding salary structure this year, I guess I'd like to point out that we do have some revenue we've not really thought about that's likely to come in. Again, it's speculative. But I, I do think this issue with that building, it, to me, is very interesting because I think it's an unfinished business that we probably should have now. I think the Commission at that time maybe didn't realize what they were, maybe they did, maybe, maybe they, maybe they did not. And if they did not, I think we ought to have that discussion still. With that, again, I'll continue to advocate. I think there's one plan that stands out of the, of the plans that we looked, talked about yesterday. If anybody's interested in this, it's in our staff meeting, it's on YouTube, it's on Facebook. There's one plan I, I strongly support. That's the 15-step plan. It was, it was created by HR, vetted by HR, supported by our Fire Chief. And I think it solves our long-term stability problems for our Fire District. We won't have to come back and talk about this Fire District next year. If we deal with the, the 12-step plan, I think we will be talking about Fire District Pay again next year. So just to put this to bed, I'd like to see us embrace that, that 15-step plan. And that's my only comments today for the Fire District Pay, our Fire District Budget. Thank you.
Okay. I just, and I didn't want to interrupt, but I just want to add to that, your question. I was, Rusty and I and the Commissioner at the time on the Crosswinds negotiation, I was invited to be part of that with Commissioner Cruz at the time. So when that comes up, Commissioner Beatty, we can, we can rehash that. And they were very willing to help. But they've also got property that they're developing that's not tax exempt. And they do not plan to, to ask for any abatements at this time that I know of. So there would be some new property tax revenue. On the, on the Dog Track Casino, there was no incentives asked at all. So that will go from a minimum amount to quite a bit, 100-room hotel and a massive bar. And I mean, the Gillies thing and all kinds of stuff. There's, there's tractors going on there right now. So that'll have some revenue regardless of whatever. And then finally, the Integra, a comment that during that negotiations, one of their concerns was the fire protection. And I know the chief, and I believe were you involved in a few of those meetings with Integra to confirm, we do have, we do have a certified hazmat program that is nationally certified. That was a big issue, question that checked the box. And location was, was good. Anyway, there was a lot of assurances at the time for their application that the, that the fire coverage things were operationally good at this time. And then the add-on pieces of that Integra property, it's yet to be determined if those suppliers will end up asking for any property tax abatement or not. That's kind of out of our, we, we don't know what's going to happen there. So anyway, that's a little bit of a detailed answer to some of your questions that you had about that. Okay, Commissioner Howe?
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. Just a follow-up comment. I guess, you know, this is just off the top of my head. If someone was to be very thoughtful and look at the, the larger projects going on around the county, it may give you, we have baseball fields going on at Park City, I believe. I don't know what the stat, what the statuses of all that, but that appears to be potentially revenue generating. There may be other things across the county that if you start add these things up, there's a lot of really good news and developments going across, going in across the county. I just named a couple. But you start adding that up, I think that you'll see that there is potential for significant revenue that we've not tapped yet that I think will be coming into the Fire District through, through primarily new construction and, and development that we have not captured so far. Thank you.
Okay. And Commissioner Beatty?
Thank you, Chairman. The conversation on this EMS post on 53rd Street, part of the justification in making a decision versus Evergreen 12 versus Evergreen 15 is not just the deficit spending we'll be doing for five years, but its impact on fund balance. I, I think that conversation and understanding if there are going to be a, a change to fund balance in the Fire District account, I, I think that's pertinent to the conversation before we vote. Is it possible to have an understanding before next week or before next week's staff meeting even?
So with Justin's information and in some of the conversation we had yesterday, my next steps are to understand from the county appraiser's office as well as from the asset listing that we maintain in finance as a part of our balance sheet, is what the value of that property is. Also, in light of whatever property was exchanged at the time, we need to understand that. So yes, I believe we should have that answer. But I, and I do agree that fund balance is important. But I also want to make sure that the Commissioners keep in mind the trajectory of that deficit spending and the fact that the deficit spending is on personnel, which is outside of policy and best practice. So there are still some, some of those considerations to keep in mind.
Thank you. And those considerations are a challenge because a lot of the speculative conversation is happening, you know, five years out. You know, what happens when some of these abatements expire and we start generating revenue? And so these are challenging, complex conversations to have about where the Fire District is going five years and beyond. But, but knowing the impact that deficit spending for five years has on our, on our fund balance is certainly pertinent to the conversation.
Absolutely, yes.
And knowing that if the Fire District's going to come into a little bit more money that will impact that fund balance, I think is really, really important. The, the second question, does the, we're thinking ahead about equipment needs that could come on top of just, we're talking a lot about compensation and personnel.
Yes.
There are going to be equipment needs that come within five years. Does the Fire District have a capacity to bond? I know we don't have any bonding activity happening there. What, do they have that capacity? And is it limited capacity? Is it, what does that look like in the District?
So when you talk about traditional bonding, we think buildings. Yes, the Fire District would have the opportunity to do that, though they have no bond rating. They don't have, so they would pay a higher interest rate. In terms of what you're talking about, in terms of equipment, what we do today is for the larger pieces of apparatus, we do what's called a lease purchase agreement. And Commissioners approve those things. And what we would do is basically finance at, at the, we're able to use the county's kind of credit rating in that case. We're able to finance those pieces of apparatus seven or eight years, depending on the costs. And the Fire District pays that as debt service. So yes, we do have that capacity. But I also would say that because this Commission has allowed us to transfer some of their excess cash in prior years when they've had good years, we've been able to build up their special equipment fund. And Deputy Chief Nelson and Finance with Budget have talked about trying to draw on some of those special equipment funds also to purchase some of those things in the next five years to alleviate some of the burden on the Fire General Fund.
I had a question, and this one is out there.
Oh, boy.
ARPA dollars, contingency dollars, we have quite a bit. Do you know the total 13 million? Is that what we're?
That's roughly what we're at today.
We've used ARPA dollars prior to my time here for compensation and bonuses and things of that sort.
Bring me in, pay. Premium pay, right.
Premium pay. Is there any offset that can be had here with ARPA contingency for the fire district? Not in compensation, I'm talking about the concern about some of the other expenditures that?
There would be very, because ARPA came to Sedgwick County and not Fire District One, which even though we share a board, they're technically separate entities, there is no provision under ARPA for Sedgwick County to share that with Fire District without also having some kind of fair access to those funds by other governments in the community. So we would likely need to do a needs assessment to evaluate that, find out what the need is, and then allocate. And given where we are since it's August and ARPA ends, kind of the contracting ends next year, I don't know that I would advocate for that right now.
Well, the challenge, when we talk fire district and financials there, is it's such a limited scope.
Yes.
They can't borrow from the county, they can't, I mean, it's just such a limited scope. We can't give general fund dollars to supplement. And that's why these decisions are really important, and these decisions are actually really challenging in this. I contend that the number one asset that we have in our fire department isn't our equipment, it's our people, it's our staff.
Absolutely.
And I'm thankful that, by and large, our commission unanimously, I believe, and county staff believes, that the 24 budget, the focus on this is going to be on staffing and compensation and making sure we take care of our best assets that perform government service. So I still believe that the 15-step plan is the best plan for doing right by these people, setting up staffing stability in the district. But I also acknowledge that we're looking at five-year deficit, and we've got to figure out, hey, how do we justify this with being good stewards? I think we can find a way there, I think we can, I believe we can. But top of mind for me is these firefighters and compensation and what we do with our staff at Sedgwick County that performs these services. So I'm excited for the next five days and having these conversations. Thank you.
Yep. Commissioner Lopez?
Thank you. I have a question about if we're looking at a little over $800,000 is what the deficit is, where we want to be at over five years. Can we, can you or Doug or whoever, look at where we could cut $160,000 or however much it is a year, so that way it's more feasible to get there? I mean, I would feel a lot better if that looked better in those outer years to go ahead and go with the 15-step plan. I don't feel comfortable with it at this point just because of what that looks like. And like I said yesterday, we can hope that the fire district grows, and it looks like it could potentially do that, but we don't have assurances that that's going to happen. So if we could see potentially where we could cut $160,000 a year over the next five years that could make up that gap, I would feel a lot more comfortable going forward with that plan, but I would need to see that first. So I don't know if that's something that you can look at. I know I'm going to meet with Casey and some of the guys this afternoon, and I was going to ask them that as well, but if you wouldn't mind looking into it as well, that would be really helpful.
Absolutely, we'll be happy to.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Good discussion. And any other comments?
Chairman, if I could chime in on Commissioner Lopez's question, and I'm looking back at Rusty, but we have, based on the discussion that the commission had yesterday, we are looking at some potential savings. I'm Chief Nelson's part of the team looking at that. And also, things that we can modify in the future, particularly in the outer years of the forecast, '26, '27, '28, if revenues are not shaping up the way we anticipate. Strategies and plans, and there's a number of them, that the fire department could implement to make budget, basically. So we are, we will have that for you, hopefully by end of week, definitely before we vote on the budget. We'll get that to you in advance. And I don't know, Rusty, does that cover it good enough?
Okay. Okay. All right. Thank you. Okay, so again, good conversations. And so, Madam Clerk, next item.
Other.
Does anybody have anything under other, under the fire agenda? Don't see any? Next item?
Executive session.
We do not have executive session on, for fire. So we will adjourn the fire agenda and we'll return to the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners. Next item, please.
Budget discussion.
Budget discussion. On the regular, on our county commission, or our county budget overall. Anybody have anything under budget that they'd like to address at this time? Anybody? No? Good? Good? Okay.
We're making progress.
Okay. Commissioner Howell?
Apologize for the late notification there. Anyway, just wanted to reflect on the revenue neutral rate notification we got in the mail. I don't know if my colleagues received any feedback from the public or not, but I sure did. And my first comment, again, part of me says, I really like the breakdown of the different jurisdictions. I think it is educational. I do think there are some things on here that would be preferable. I know that our county clerk is going to be advocating for some changes to this format. For example, the address is not really shown in the property description, I think that's probably a minor thing, but the columns are not totaled. And I guess in some jurisdictions, there actually is more, some areas, there are more jurisdictions and there are lines on the sheets, so that may be a problem. But it'd be nice if these are totaled up. Let's do the simple math, trying to add up things on the sheet. Actually, in my personal opinion, things don't quite add up the way I think they should. So I'm still, again, I think I'm a pretty smart guy, but I can't really make sense of this completely. I feel bad for people who have never seen this before, and they struggle with the format and some of the stuff that's on here. Also, let me just point out, the state of Kansas, again, they are very proud that they pass a budget the way they do and everything. Again, I love our state legislators, but there's 21.5 mils on here that I don't think they had much debate over. They did capture the assessed value increase, and I don't think there's a public hearing, I don't think there's a public vote on that specifically. So 21.5 mils, they captured the increase of nine, about 9% increase in revenue to themselves. A little more than nine, if you think of it, at least in my district, it shows a little bit more than 9%. I would like to point out, again, county right now is proposing a 29.370, so we're not drastically different than what the state is. We are going through a lot of effort to get public comment. I have had, I don't know how many meetings now, I'm trying to ask for public comment, and I still don't have anybody yet this year that said, here, I have a good place for you to cut. That hasn't happened yet this year. So I still have some ideas, I'll continue to work on that. But I'll just say this, that the public doesn't want a tax increase. I don't think the county, again, from my sheet here, it says I'm going to pay about $84 more for the county taxes this next year if this passes as planned. But my total tax increase is about $500. So most of that's not for the county, it's for other jurisdictions. One other thing I'd just like to point out, again, I know this is just me thinking big ideas here, but I still think the state ought to consider billing property owners separately for state revenue needs rather than using the county treasure. I think that would be very helpful, split that up just for education purposes, so the Department of Revenue would actually send out a bill, just like the county treasurer sends out a bill. So the state would actually bill for their own revenue, and we would bill for our local government revenue. To me, that would be very educational, and people would certainly see how much money goes to state budget versus local government. To me, that would be very, very educational. And then finally, I'll just say this, let me advocate once again for LA VTR and city county revenue sharing. I've been doing a lot of thinking about that. We would, I think we would undoubtedly lower mill levy by four mils, because that's how much money we would get from the state if they would, in fact, fund that program. And they're sitting on quite a bit, quite a bit of ending balance for the state, way more than what they're supposed to have. They're supposed to have a 7.5% ending balance, I believe there's up over about $3 to $4 billion at this point. So I think they can fund it, and at the end of the day, if they would fund that, we would lower mill levy by about four mils. So I think that we ought to have that conversation in Topeka once again. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay. Commissioner Beatty?
Thank you, Chairman. I was going to mention it through other, but since Commissioner Howell talked about the R and R, I did receive no less than 10 emails and messages and texts about the revenue neutral rate, mailer that went out. It was an opportunity to really provide some clarity. There was a lot of confusion, frankly, about what this means and what it looks like and who's raising taxes, who's not raising taxes, what this looks like. So it really was an opportunity to kind of provide some clarity. But it's also a reminder on our end that what we do in this budget matters. I'm so grateful for the conversation about the mill levy that we had in staff meeting. The Sedgwick County is going to try to lead in some of these regards. We talked about a quarter mil, we talked about up to a half mil, we talked about somewhere in the middle. It's my understanding that that conversation is not happening in a lot of taxing jurisdictions. And I just want to remind us, but I also want to publicly remind, that there are a lot of people in our community that really are hurting financially, they really are. The cost of all goods, all services, the gas, all of it matters, and it's all gone up substantially the last two years for people. There's a misnomer that an increase in property taxes doesn't impact, it impacts a select few people in our community, and that's just, it's a fallacy. It's not correct. That not only does it impact the middle income, middle-class homeowner, it also impacts the renter. Because when you have sharp increases in property taxes, it gets passed through on rent rate. It will impact the vast majority of our community. Now, what the public needs to also understand is, property taxes from Sedgwick County government typically only make up 20 to 25% of your tax bill. The vast majority of the tax bill is coming from the cities, municipalities, townships, school boards, that's where the vast majority of the property tax bill is coming from. And to my understanding, none of those taxing jurisdictions are having a conversation about lowering their mill levy. In fact, most that I know of, particularly in my district, if you're listening, are talking about grabbing all of the assessed growth and increasing mill levy. And that is a challenge to the people that serve and that live in our community. So we have a burden of responsibility to do the very best we can with the 20 to 25% that we can own. Are we going to be able to do it all and get under revenue neutral rate? No, that's not, it's really not an option. It's not. But we can be as responsible as we can and be good stewards of what it has, because what we do really does matter to the people in this community. It matters. And people are hurting in this community financially, particularly those on fixed income, particularly those that are already living paycheck to paycheck, sitting at their dining room tables, trying to figure out how they're going to pay their bills. This matters, the next week matters here. And I appreciate that we're willing to dive in and do the best we can from Sedgwick County. So Chairman, just a couple of thoughts.
Thank you. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate it. And I also received my R and R notice, and I hope everyone takes an opportunity to sit down and study their R and R notice. The thing that it points out to me is, how can the state help us? Well, first of all, we've got to go back in time and look at all of the different things, and I can only talk about Sedgwick County now. But look at all the things that the state has removed from us to be able to balance our budget. Because everything that they've removed on taxes that we could have obtained in different ways, we have to transfer that somewhere, because we still have to pay for those goods and services. And as a result, the only place that we can move it to is property taxes, and that's unfortunate. So some of them are small, some of them are very large that they've removed from us. It brings up the LA VTR discussion and CCRS that Commissioner Howell mentioned already, something that we're working with the Kansas Association of Counties to see if we can't get the state to take a look at those. But again, the state, just on my property tax bill, the 20 mils and the 1.5 mils, is the increase alone is over $130. I'm paying over $1,000 on my property tax on my home just on those two things. That doesn't include everything else that's on my property tax bill. So the state that keeps casting stones at local jurisdictions for trying to lower property tax, they increase it but don't say anything. So I hope that we can have some meaningful discussions this year about LA VTR and CCRS as we move forward, because as Commissioner Howell said, he's calculated it out. I knew it was a huge impact, but four mils for Sedgwick County would make a huge difference for the community, not counting what the city side could gain us. So I hope we can continue to move forward with those discussions. We need to educate the community. Yesterday, right after our board meeting, I got a call from John Whitmer to discuss his show that he's going to have this weekend. And the direction of his show was going to be, hey, we're all raising taxes and we're not doing anything about it. And so I pointed out that we are having discussions for Sedgwick County to actually lower our mill levy, which kind of, I don't know if he realized that we were doing that. But then I steered it to, really, how can the state help us? And such things as the proposed cap on property taxes and so forth, I think, is misguided. But he wasn't aware of any of these things with LA VTR and CCRS. And so I'm going to provide him a little bit more information on what that he can do to get the word out to the community, because the five of us going up to the legislature, I don't think has as much power as the community contacting their legislators and telling them that they want property tax relief, but they can provide it. The state has $4 billion sitting there right now that they could help start providing tax relief. So we need the community to listen to us, and if you want educated on these programs, we'd be happy to do that. But they need to talk to their legislators, because that's where we can get real property tax relief. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And Commissioner Lopez?
I just have a question. So I know that we're working through the Kansas Association of Counties, right, to look at how we as counties are going to be working with the state to try to adjust some of those changes. But do we know what the league of municipalities or what the cities are doing? Is there any way that we could do county and city unified messaging across all of us to take to the state? Or I just don't know what the cities are doing.
Well, there's a joint chamber county-city.
Well, every year, every year, we, when we get our platform ready, we sit down with the chamber, the city of Wichita, and REAP, which, who represents a number of cities in the region around, in and around Sedgwick County. And we discuss platforms where we have synergy between all the items, and that becomes a joint platform that we present to the state of Kansas. There's an opportunity for the commission to use that tool to send a unified message to the state on this particular topic. So past that, I mean, I don't know what they're doing in Garden City or Dodd City, but for us as a region, we have mechanisms to put a unified message out.
So, and I realize that we do the joint platform, but is there a way that we can reach out, or I guess I should talk to the Kansas Association of Counties, and if they can reach out to the league of municipalities to see what their plan is on this? Because I think it would be worthwhile to link those up.
And, Chairman, Justin Weiner, Commissioner Lopez, that question, it's my understanding, and I'm on the KAC board, so, but it's my understanding the league of municipalities has not prioritized this to the same level of the KAC, but that's something that perhaps we could reach out to others at KAC to suggest that, see if we could have their membership going along with a similar message to legislature. So that's, I don't know if the other commissioners think that's a good idea, a good suggestion, but we could certainly run that by other members of the KAC.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. And Commissioner Beatty?
We're talking about, thank you, Chairman, talking about the larger association of counties, but we also have SCAC here locally, and this might be a topic of conversation. I don't know, I haven't looked at my calendar where the next SCAC meeting is, but this might be an opportunity to where we actually make this a topic of discussion and see if we can get some uniformity in the room with SCAC here locally, our local delegation, our local county, local municipalities. I think if we can have a unified voice in this and actually have a unified plan and a unified message, I think that we could actually put enough pressure on the conversation to where we actually get, where you can share our feedback. I choose to believe that a lot of our legislators really do care about what's happening in our communities. They do. What I've noticed is that there's a general lack of awareness of what is really happening and how this is really impacting local government. So this, I would recommend, since we're doing a lot of the messaging and agendas for SCAC, that we put this on the next SCAC meeting and have a real conversation and see if we can start building some consensus locally.
Okay. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sorry to come back in, but I forgot one statement that I should have made about LA VTR. That is really your sales tax money that's going to the state, and they're supposed to return it to us. And so you're, in actuality, double paying taxes to the state, because you're paying the sales tax that goes to the state and is supposed to come back to us, but it's not coming back to us, so therefore, we have to move it over to property tax in order to be able to support our government. So you're paying for it again. So I just don't want the public to forget the fact that you already paid this tax and you should be getting it back by state statute, and you're not getting it back, so you're actually paying twice. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Chairman. Just a quick question.
I am, I don't know the answer to this question, so this is a legit question, Lindsey. Last year's budget was 29.368, this year's proposed budget is 29.370. Why is that different?
It's just the default figure that we've been using the last couple of years since we removed the mill levy rate target. There is no magic science to it.
If this was to pass and they say Kelly does his, Clark does his normal thing, he does some technical adjustment, would this number be different in the future, or is it going to be 29.37?
This number is entirely at the discretion of the commission. We would continue to use 29.37 until you direct us otherwise.
Okay, I guess I wasn't part of that discussion. I still am in love with the 29.359 number, so I'm not sure who picked 29.37, but that is a...
Honestly, we picked it for the February retreat and rolled that number out, and that's just been what we've been using.
Okay, just another. I'm looking at my R and R sheet once again. Let me just make a little point here. We talk about mill levy rates versus mill levy tax dollars, okay? The rates, we, sometimes we hear people stand up and say, I didn't increase the mill levy rate, okay? This year, I looked at, just to check Commissioner Beatty's, his is the same as mine, okay? The state has a flat 1.5, same as last year. County has a .002 mill increase. That's an increase, a point zero, it's very small, but still .002. City Derby reduced theirs by over half a mill. USD 260 schools reduced theirs some, about a portion of a mill, say about a third of a mill. The other state school taxes are flat. They did not change a single digit. And then you go on down, the USD 260 Rec Commission actually went down, and El Paso Cemetery went down. So the only increase on the sheet is us. That is a problem. So at the very least, I would really say we shouldn't be above 29.368 versus 29.370. I know we're talking about some adjustment, but let me just make a point. That has to happen, in my opinion. I would never support a budget that has a .002 percent, a .002 mill increase.
Well, and I think what we can do in the future is revert to the technically adjusted rate. That'll be our standard. We'll talk about it at the February workshop, and then you all can let us know if you'd like to make different assumptions.
And I'll, and I'll say also, you know, we had a resolution, we rescinded it as a commission, that gave us the idea to ignore the technical adjustment rate, and we went to a target rate regardless of what the technical adjustment was. I thought that was good policy. I think that's something we should talk about again. Again, we don't want to bind future commissioners, but I don't think that really binds anybody. Again, we got out of it just because the will of the commission changed it once again. So I don't think that's a locked-in policy that can't be changed. It just gives us, again, a guardrail or a target or a goal. I think that's healthy for any governing body. Let me just also say, you know, I'm looking at the budget. I might do this more next week, and you know, I haven't had a chance to talk yet. But let me just say, you know, in terms of cuts, if you only want a cut, according to what the state says, they either think we're going to use any imbalance, which means we've overtaxed people in the past, or we're going to find efficiencies. And Tom, I don't think you want us micromanaging your agencies, getting involved in your business, trying to find inefficiencies amongst your agencies. I think that's your job, right? That's not our job. We trust you to do that, right? That's your job, not mine. So I think we have to trust our manager to look for efficiencies. We might decide to fund or not fund a certain program. That's, you know, that's a policy choice we can make to fund or not fund something. There are other options, of course, is cutting FTEs, or cutting salary, or cutting program. Okay, we can cut program spending. Those are our options. So I started looking at, or, you know, some governing bodies take the easy way out. They just do a cross-the-board cut. And say, we're going to cut everything by 3% or 5%. Actually, this should be 8%, believe it or not. More than 8% we'd have to cut across the board. It's very, very difficult to come to terms with that. So I'm looking at our election office over here. I don't think she wants to see a cut in her office right now. She's trying to get ready for a presidential election, right? Bad, I don't think our sheriff has $75 million in his budget. I don't think we're going to cut the sheriff because I don't think, I think right now, he's doing a great job. And at the end of the day, our corrections department is doing God's work in the corrections department, $30 million. But you almost start cutting, we have to, we have to pick. Actually, these things are in the budget, we have to cut. Doesn't do any good to cut a grant fund because it doesn't solve the problem. And some people say, well, just cut, you know, some of these grant programs. It doesn't solve the problem. We have to cut property tax. And property tax primarily is used in infrastructure and public safety primarily. And then there's also some quality of life. And again, I'll make a connection, once again, our sales tax is, if my personal opinion is, our sales tax funds the quality of life stuff. So I don't think that really ought to be on the table for cuts. So, yeah, we have to cut human services, infrastructure, and public safety. So if we have to get to it, I just sort of started thinking, okay, we've got to cut that, we've got to cut that, cut a million there, a million there, 2 million there, 300,000 there. I get to $15 million. I may propose this next week just for fun and show you what that looks like, okay? I don't plan to vote for that. But to the extent that people out there think we should just cut $15 million, let's take a look what that looks like. It looks horrible, and no one really thinks that's legitimate. So to those out there that are advocating for just cutting budget, I had a meeting just yesterday. I say, hey, here's my budget, but let me help you out, let me show you how this works. I said, where do you think we should cut? And they said, that's your job. You're the expert. And I think, I don't know where to cut. I'm trying. I have some ideas, some small ideas. I can cut a little bit here and there. I maybe cut 1 or 2 million if I try. But to cut $15 million is probably not something I can come up with. That's a long speech. Thank you again for a chance to speak, Chairman.
Okay, anything else? I don't see any. That was a good discussion again. I've just enjoyed the process of us having a budget discussion this six weeks or whatever. It's been, I think it's healthy, and it's more open and transparent for the public to see and for us to hear each other in an open meeting, so. Okay, with that, we're done with the budget discussion. Next item, please.
Committee reports.
Committee reports. Any commissioners have anything on the committees they serve on? I'll just mention that I'm on the GWP Board, and they just had a robust meeting last week summarizing. Dr. Mumma presented summarizing the Bioscience Center, kind of had a map of what that is, and gave some good information there. I think they're on like, they want to be open the fall of '25? So they're going to be on aggressive scale there. And had a summary of the Paris, the airshow, the World Airshow that they all attended. And actually, they sent a summary of that to myself and Manager Stoltz. I think you got a copy of the summary. I think that'd be good to share, if you would like to share that with all the commissioners so they can get a feeling of how big a thing that was. So, oh, you all got it? Okay, they got it. Okay, good. Okay. So that's my committee report. Anybody else have a committee report? Okay, don't see any? Next item, please.
Other?
Other. It's the clerk's favorite time, other. Commissioner Howell.
I just wanted to reflect on a sad news story this morning. A school just got started. We have a lot of new bus drivers out there, and kids are excited to go to school, and there's a lot of change in the community. We had, if I understand correctly, an eight-year-old child was tragically hit by a school bus in my district, in a neighborhood that I grew up in, actually, for a short time. And I just want to say, number one, that is an incredibly sad story. Please pray for the bus driver. Please pray for EMS paramedics, they had to deal with that. Pray for the school, teachers, and the other students. I don't want to see something like this ever happen. And this was a tragic story, so it involves, impacts so many people. I have to mention it, and I just want to say, I lift them up in prayer, and I pray for, pray for everyone involved that they would see some of God's healing peace that only God can provide. So with that, I wanted to mention that, Chairman. Thank you for a chance to speak.
Okay. Tragic news. So any other, under other? I don't see any? Next item, please.
Executive session.
Yes, Commissioner Howell, executive session.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Board of County Commissioners recess into executive session for 45 minutes until 11 o'clock AM for preliminary discussions relating to the acquisition of real property for the purpose of discussion of the potential purchase of land and buildings for use by county departments. And the Board of County Commissioners returns to this room from executive session at 11 o'clock AM.
Second, any questions? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez. Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Beatty.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Okay, we'll meet in the downstairs conference room, and it's 10:15. We'll see you all at 11 o'clock. Thank you.
Are you ready to get started?
At eleven o'clock. Give me a countdown and we'll go live at eleven o'clock. There you go. Tell me when you're ready.
Okay, standing by.
Okay, standing by.
In ten, nine, eight, seven, six, five.
All right, thank you everyone for coming back. It is eleven o'clock. Chairman Meister had to go to an appointment so we're going to finish this meeting without him today. I call back to order the Board of County Commissioners for August the 16th. And I will declare an executive session that no action was taken. And so with that, Commissioners anything else to come before the -- any business come before the board before we dismiss? All right, seen none. We are adjourned. Thank you.